All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The time is 7:35. This is the regular council meeting for October 23rd. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Councilwoman Aaron?
Here.
Mayor Portembliss?
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming?
Here.
Councilor Rorback?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Grabstein?
I'm here, thank you. The invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Councilman Soltis. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Let us please now bow our heads in a moment of silence for all the innocent Israelis who were ostensibly murdered. My pledge of allegiance is...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
Yes.
At the recommendation of legal counsel, I move that we postpone ordinances 2196 and 2197 to honor before the next council meeting of November 13th.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of postponing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
All right. Motion carries six one. This will be postponed until honor before November 13th. Are there any other additions or deletions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to turn over to Jeffrey Sherman, our legal counsel, who is going to present to us the resolution for condemning Hamas's intentional attack on civilians.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. I must preface my presentation of this resolution by expressing my condolences to Oakland County Commissioner Gary McGilvery, to his children and to his entire family for the loss of their beloved wife and mother, Diane McGilvery. Diane was a very nice person, a sweet person, and it pained me to see her suffering at Gary's Park dedication. All of us will miss her. May her memory be a blessing for the McGilvery family and this entire community, and may she rest in peace. I will now read the resolution into the record that is pending before this council and have a few comments about it. The resolution is titled Madison Heights City Council Resolution Condemning Hamas for Intentionally Killing Civilians, Raping Women, and Hostage-Taking. Whereas Hamas has been designated as a terrorist organization by the United States, Canada, the United Kingdom, the European Union, Australia, Japan, and other countries. Whereas Hamas overthrew the Palestinian Authority in a violent coup d'etat in 2007 in order to take control of the Gaza Strip. Whereas Hamas seeks an Islamic-Palestinian state over the combined territory of Israel, the West Bank, and the Gaza Strip, and rejects a two-state solution to the Arab-Israeli conflict. Whereas on October 7, 2023, Hamas carried out an unprecedented, heinous, and barbaric attack on the state of Israel. Whereas on October 7, 2023, Hamas terrorists invaded Israel by land, sea, and air and intentionally slaughtered over 1,400 Israeli civilians, including 30 American citizens, 260 young people attending a music festival, raped women and children, murdered families in their homes, including infants and the elderly, set people and homes on fire, beheaded children, and took at least 199 men, women, and children, including 20 American citizens, as hostages. And whereas on October 7, 2023, and continuing through the date of this resolution, Hamas has indiscriminately fired thousands of rockets toward Israeli cities, causing Israeli civilians to seek cover in bomb shelters. And whereas the foregoing attacks resulted in the largest number of Jews killed in a single day since the Holocaust. Whereas even though evidence of the atrocities has been presented and widely disseminated in the form of videos, photographs, news reports from reporters on the ground, testimony from survivors, and announcements by U.S. government officials, among other sources, some people deny the authenticity of this evidence or justify these acts of terrorism. Terrorism, excuse me. Whereas the city council recognizes and categorically states that the intentional targeting and killing of civilians, the raping of women and children, and the taking of civilian hostages is never justified and is never to be celebrated under any circumstances, including the promotion of political aims and goals. Whereas the city council further recognizes and categorically acknowledges that Hamas does not represent all Palestinians and that many Palestinians and other people in the Arab world have condemned this terrorist attack, called for the release of the hostages, and seek peace with Israel. Whereas the city council stands with Israel and supports its right to defend itself from acts of war and terrorism in conformity with international law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Madison Heights City Council condemns Hamas's intentional attack on civilians, sends our condolences to the families of those murdered, conveys our wishes for a full and speedy recovery to those wounded, demands the release of the hostages, denounces anyone who celebrates atrocities perpetuated on civilians or perpetrated on civilians, including innocent children, rejects anyone who denies the authenticity of the evidence of these crimes, or anyone who justifies these acts of terrorism, implores Egypt and other countries to open its borders to allow foreign nationals, including Palestinian Americans and others, to leave Gaza and to provide humanitarian assistance to Palestinian civilians fleeing the fighting as Israel works to heal its wounded and to search and free the hostages, condemns anti-Semitism and Islamophobia, and supports Israel's right to defend itself from acts of war and terrorism in conformity with international law. Be it further resolved, copies of this resolution shall be forwarded to President Joseph R. Biden, U.S. Senator Debbie Stabenow, U.S. Senator Gary Peters, U.S. Representative Haley Stevens, Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer, Attorney General Dana Nessel, Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson, State Senator Stephanie Chang, State Representative Mike McFaul, State Representative Tom Kuhn, Oakland County Chief Executive David Coulter, and Oakland County Commissioner Gary McGilvery.
All right, thank you. Can I...
Yes, Your Honor, the council will bear with me just for a few minutes. I drafted this resolution, and I just have a few comments. Although Gary Sayers has managed to keep me extremely busy, I've been to the Middle East many times. I've been to Israel, through the West Bank, southern Lebanon in pre-Hesbulla days, Egypt and Jordan. And if you ever get a chance to see the pyramids, please do. They're absolutely and totally amazing. In any event, I know something about the conflict. Nonetheless, this resolution does not ask you to take a position on the Arab-Israeli conflict, but it does ask you to condemn terrorism and the heinous acts of intentionally targeting and killing civilians, raping women, beheading people, including children, and taking children and the elderly as hostages. The victims on October 7 were butchered. And not all the victims were Jewish. One of the victims was an Arab by the name of Awad Dawashay. He was an Arab-Israeli paramedic assigned to the music festival. He was trying to save the life of... In other words, he was there that night, overnight. He was assigned to it. He was trying... Once the terrorists showed up and they were shooting people, he tried to save the life of a wounded concertgoer. When some of the Hamas terrorists came upon him, he spoke to them in Arabic and told them that he was an Israeli-Arab. After all, 20% of the Israeli population is Arab. The Hamas gunman killed him anyway. Another Israeli-Arab was Lior Assulin. He was an excellent soccer player and a member of the first Israeli-Arab team to win a major soccer trophy. He too was killed. These acts must be condemned in no uncertain terms. Rape, murder, and hostage-taking are never justified for the advancement of political goals or aims or for any other purpose. Hamas is like Al Qaeda, ISIS, and the 9/11 hijackers. They're opposed to a two-state solution, and they support the destruction of Israel. And now... And I know that someone is going to say or ask the question, and you're right to ask the question, what about Israel's bombing of the Gaza Strip? Why should we not condemn that as well? Why shouldn't we call for a ceasefire? Well, no one wants to see innocent people killed. A ceasefire would leave Hamas in power and a threat to continue their deadly attacks against Israel. In such a case, Hamas will have won. Intentionally killing civilians, raping women, and taking hostages will pay. Doing so only increases the chance that acts like these will continue. Israel must be given the ability within the confines of international law to topple Hamas from power, to A, ensure that it can no longer attack Israelis, and B, to free the Palestinians living in the Gaza Strip from their rule. And while you're asking yourself that question, you need to ask yourself the following. After the 9/11 hijackers killed 3,000 of our citizens, almost all civilians, would you have been in favor of calling for a ceasefire? Or would you expect our government to take action toward Daxa to protect us? If free nations like our own cannot respond to terrorist attacks like this one, no one will be able to act in self-defense. No one. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to... I'm going to make one comment on what you said. You said something to the effect of no one wants to see innocent civilians hurt, and I'm going to disagree with you and say that's not true. Hamas has no concern about innocent victims, children, elderly, anyone, and neither did the Nazis. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion from council to approve this resolution.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, I will make one comment, and that is that I was at the solidarity event two weeks ago, and that's why I wasn't here. There were a number of elected officials there. There were a number of Jewish people there, and there were a number of people like myself who covered both bases. And what meant the most to me as a Jewish person was the elected people were the elected people who were not Jewish, when they stood up to say this isn't okay. With that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. At this point, we're going to open the meeting to the public, so this is the opportunity for members of the public to speak. I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, that you address me. You can speak at the podium. If you have anything you'd like us to read, please hand it to me. I will make sure that it gets to council. And we have a large number of people here. I don't know if everyone's planning on speaking, but again, I ask that you keep it to three minutes. And with that, please go ahead.
No person shall hold any office of the United States who shall have given comfort to the enemies thereof is in Section 3 of Amendment 14 of the Constitution of the United States. Cheryl Roslin, Tim Joe, failure to come to Madison Heights Counsel Chamber on October 10, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. to on cameras to Peter to deny Madison Heights from their public... from their Pontiac is charging Peter with case number 0062694, disorderly is public record proof. Cheryl Roslin, Tim Joe is violating Section 3 of Amendment 14 of the Constitution of the United States, where all staff of 43rd District Court of Madison Heights is violating this section. Cheryl Roslin, Tim Joe, staff is having zero power to get lawyer for Cheryl Roslin, Tim Joe, staff, enemies for Peter's lawsuit in this public court and hate crime. In fact, Roslin, clerks of Madison Heights, Ellen S. N. Y. D. R. S. S. L. U. T.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hello, my name is Rabbi Simchat Olwen. I'm a rabbi in Oak Park, Michigan. I was informed that the council was presenting this resolution, and I had prepared some remarks. I just want to express from the deepest place of my heart, my grandfather was born in Detroit, my mother was born in Detroit, I have 190 media relatives living in Israel, and there is nothing to be added to what was said with such clarity. We're all familiar that today, a couple hours ago, the IDF invited over 100 reporters to view 43 minutes of footage because there's moral ambiguity in this world, and it's shocking. But here, in this chamber, in the city of Madison Heights, there's absolute clarity, and I commend you for that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Rabbi.
How are you? As a 38-year resident of Madison Heights, I am here to express my adamant disapproval of any additional marijuana facilities in Madison Heights, in this case two. These facilities should have been voted on by the citizens or opted out of from the start by the city, as other cities have done. All of this possible litigation could realistically have been avoided. A decision on these types of facilities should take into account the possible increase in crime that they present. It should take into account the effect they may have on property values. These facilities do not enhance the image of a city. It should take into account the lives affected by drug abuse and the fact that marijuana is often a gateway drug. Will these facilities constantly sue us over licenses? Because to them, there are never enough of these facilities in a city. They approach communities with all of their monetary promises and hope that politicians will make out wish lists with that money, but at what cost? Is Madison Heights going to have nothing but car washes and tacky pot facilities? Strip joints would bring in revenue for the city, too. But would we want that? Where does it end? Madison Heights has been a city for 68 years and has managed to sustain itself for about 65 of those without having to engage itself with these types of facilities. Can we please try to hold some level of decorum for the image of this city? Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hello, thank you for your time. I'm Kevin Tribucci. I live at 28306 Bar Street. Hello, Mayor and everybody. Yeah, I got like three issues. I want more time to do my fence from this council, my back fence. I border L. Images and the Animal Hospital. For two years, two years, my fence was L. Images. That's what the code enforcement told me. The city threw the fence back to me after two years, needing... after it was falling down and needing repair, and then makes outrageous demands. The city itself should repair this fence that the city's caused. Maybe a new fence on the city's part of the thing. And L. Images tears down a great block wall with the city's okay. I don't think this is right, was right. I can't remove my fence without getting warnings. What's wrong with this? And then on the rocks, that bar, I'm looking at the mayor, they built three new residential fences in the last five years behind their building. And L. Images was required to do mine, but then this was reversed after a year and a half. And quite frankly, I wasn't happy. Okay, light... And then, so I'm back repairing the fence, and I see that awful lighting from L. Images and the Animal Hospital. And I got like a bright headlight that shines into my kitchen, passing over the seven-foot walls, takes over my backyard, and I deserve nighttime dark black yard all the time, but I never have it because the Animal Hospital is open 24 hours, seven days a week. And the lights are even on on L. Images, even though they're not even open 24 hours, seven days a week. I think they're only open eight hours, but they keep their lights on all night, and the two brightest lights 10 feet from my property. I object. Yeah, I would like you to un-grandfather and close that Animal Hospital, turn off all those crazy nuanced, extreme bright lights. It's worse than nonstop barking dogs. I've only got three seconds. The alley, L. Images was going to reasphalt that public alley. No one in the city knew about it, but today, they were ordered not to reasphalt that alley. There's a 20-foot swing gate there. No one in the city knows anything about it. There's snowplow injures the residential fences, and they're never repaired. I want the city to require L. Images to repair those fences and have the city do this snowplowing from now on. And I think my time's almost up.
You have about nine seconds.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll say thank you.
Timer.
I'll say thank you. Thank you for those nine seconds, and say thank you to everybody, not just to me.
Thank you, Mr. Tribucci. I will let you know that I spoke to you the other day and that council is aware of this and that the city is looking into it. So we do have your concerns, and they are noted, and it is being looked to. I'm not going to give you an answer right now and tell you it's resolved, but it is being looked into. Please.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. My name is David Leiter. I live in the area, and I'm the president of Holistic Industries Liberty Cannabis, located at 29600 Stevenson. Between taxes, community fees, and licenses, we've paid Madison Heights over $1 million since 2021. This includes over $370,000 this year alone in taxes. Clearly, we're one of your largest taxpayers. We're also the number one applicant in what we believe would be your only cannabis process, yielding only two licensed verticals, meaning two retail locations. Then you added a... Then you added a third, and we sat quiet. Now, only last week, we found out you want a fourth and a fifth. The citizens don't need more, period. We spent over twenty-five million dollars rehabilitating what was one of the worst properties in the city. It was a partnership back then, really. You couldn't thank us enough for doing what we said, and we did what we said. But if we knew that you changed the field, adding three more dispensaries, I'm not sure we would have spent as much money as we did. To be clear, your application drove us to make that investment to win, because retail was the prize. Only verticals win, you said. I could have built or grow a lot of other places way cheaper. But let me tell you, since we've been here as part of the city, myself and my team love it. We love being part of the city. Further, unfortunately, adding insult to injury, we've lost millions of dollars since we've been open. Of course, the Michigan market collapsed, oversupply, and poor state enforcement of illicit markets. It's not Madison Heights' fault. But making us build a vertical, now adding more retail, hurting one of your largest taxpayers, kind of is. To be clear, my only concern is more retail. Frankly, that's the area of our business that at least holds its own, mitigating overall losses. More locations will be devastating to us. By the way, in addition to the taxes that we pay, we pay a twenty-five thousand dollar annual community fee to support your programs, which we happily do. And other requests come into us and come into our team, and we happily participate because we like to be part of the community. Now finally, I assume some of your delay was because there's still a threat of litigation that appears to be driving some of your guys to stress to add more locations. I understand that. We have businesses around the country, but cities beat litigation across the country all the time. The city of Detroit did. You'll always be sued. It won't stop after this. Heck, you can use the money that we give you to fight it. Nothing in state law limits municipalities from developing their own selection process, nothing. You're in the right to do that. Please, take care of the people that made a massive investment in you. Further harming us with more stores is beyond disappointing. Your goal was to limit that type of business and not become a cannabis town like Neighbors. Talked about that with many of you. Your citizens don't want more? And like many, we've seen near and far across the country-
I'm sorry, that was a three-minute. I thought you were finishing.
Thirty seconds? Ten seconds?
Ten.
It's, I'm done. I have two sentences. And like we've seen across the country, new folks won't live up to their commitments. Your team has praised us for living up to ours. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening, counsel. Vita Palazzolo, John R., Madison Heights. First of all, thank you. Thank you so much. I was blessed enough to attend a candlelight vigil a little over a week ago, right here at the gazebo that, I believe her name is Penny Rogers from the community, put on Facebook, and unfortunately, it just didn't get the visibility as it should have because it was absolutely beautiful. I'm not Jewish with a name like Palazzolo, but I am Sicilian, and my Italian and Sicilian relatives have gone through, well, my ancestors, I should say, have gone through a lot of painstakingly historical pain, but nothing, nothing to the degree of what we're seeing today. So thank you, Penny, if you're watching this. It was just beautiful. I'd also like to thank Mayor Grabstein and Councilwoman Erin and the community for helping me with a woman that has been living and is no longer living in a bus stop on John R. and Eleven Mile, right near the Telway hamburger and CBS store. I received a text from Mayor Grabstein a few days after the council meeting, and I was blessed enough to attend a breakfast on Coalition of Homelessness and Poverty, and met a few people and did some networking, and it also just solidified some of the networking that Councilwoman Erin and I had talked about through her workplace and her mental health involvement. So, long story short, because of the post I put on Facebook, I opened a Venmo account, and we received enough money to keep, her name is Lisa, she's not the homeless woman, her name is Lisa, and she is safe. I can assure you, she's very well safe and fed and has been in a hotel for motel, I should say, for about three weeks, and we do have enough money for another few weeks. And we did see a caseworker last week and getting some balls and some wheels turning to hopefully find some permanent housing for her. So thank you so much for that. That's what a community is all about, pulling together, and I can't thank you enough. And then lastly, I'm going to ask you to consider your vote on the dispensary also. I've had multiple sclerosis for, oh geez, it's been thirteen years this month, and I am all for the medical advancement of herbs and marijuana and the, actually, the purity of the extraction and the oils. I use the topicals. I don't ingest. That's my choice. My time is up, but we have enough.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Hi, my name is Rachel. I've worked in Madison Heights for five years, come to a couple years of city council meetings. Anytime marijuana is on the agenda, I hear somebody condemn it, and I just can't sit and not say anything anymore. I don't care whether or not there's more dispensaries. That has no impact on me. I do care that we don't perpetuate bad stereotypes. Having safe and legal facilities helps keep marijuana clean. It prevents it from being split with other things that can harm people, can kill, can kill people, and can make people addicted to drugs they didn't even know they were taking. I've had friends whose family members who have died. I have friends who don't even realize what they're taking because of it. Having it in safe facilities keeps people safe, and Madison Heights has been a blue-collar town the entire time I've ever known it. Getting those people to be able to get through the day better, have better experiences with their families at the end of the night, play with their children, play with their grandchildren because they're not in immense pain, it's probably going to be a benefit to everyone. Again, don't care either way about the dispensaries themselves, just want it on a record because personally, I've never heard it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Doug Glassing McLean. I live at two seven four three two Park Court in Madison Heights. Just recently, the city erected three brand-new stop signs at the corners of Park Court and Farnham. I would like to know how many complaints the city has brought in in order to do that? How much traffic enforcement has been put in there by the police department for speeding cars coming down Park Court? And the other thing I'd like to speak about tonight is the objecting to the licensing of the proposed marijuana shops in the city. I think we're, we have three now, and that's enough for the city to have. You could probably zone that for something else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name is Daniel Buckspom. I'm with the Jewish Community Relations Council of Metro Detroit, and I really had a lot to say tonight, but the truth is, what was, what was written in this resolution by the council was very concise and very sufficient. So, on behalf of the Jewish Community Relations Council and as a Madison Heights Jewish citizen myself, I want to thank you all for passing this resolution. And I also want, really, I just, you know, you took my speech. Thank you, because really, what I think is important is that, you know, our job is not to influence people to take sides in this conflict. I'm sorry to revisit this, but, you know, we're not trying to coerce anybody to take sides in this conflict, but, you know, certain lines cannot be crossed, and certain distinctions have to be made. We do not just, you know, as an organization, we do not just support the right of Israel to exist and defend itself, but we support the advocacy of a peaceful future and resolution for both people on the ground. And what we saw last weekend, two weekends ago, was so many steps backwards in the wrong direction that that needs to be recognized by everybody who seeks, who claims to seek peace for this conflict. You know, for just a number of other reasons, but really, everything that was written in the resolution, I thought, was very fair. Of course, we obviously condemn, we sympathize with the deaths of all innocents, but when you plainly say that you sympathize with the deaths of all innocents, in a sense, you're whitewashing or trying to erase the magnitude of what just took place, which was truly historic. So obviously, we pray that this war in Israel ends soon with as few civilian casualties as is possible, and we hope that what we saw the other day, well, unfortunately, we're seeing people roundly supporting it, we hope that that has not become the new norm in our world today because what that was, was simply barbaric and does not belong in today's world. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is any, someone else? All right. Again, everybody has three minutes, so everyone is welcome to. As you can tell, I'm not cutting anyone off or-
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Diane Ferrari. I live on Sherry Avenue in Madison Heights, Michigan, and I join in with several of my other residents voicing my objection to adding any additional marijuana licensed dispensaries in Madison Heights. I grew up in Madison Heights. My parents moved into the city in nineteen fifty-five. I was gone as an adult. I moved away for quite a while, came back to Madison Heights. What attracted me coming back to Madison Heights was the fact the city was well-run, we had diversity, but I'm upset about this marijuana situation. Three facilities is enough. We've had several other people, including the owner of one of the other facilities right near my home, saying that there, for the square mileage of the city Madison Heights, we don't need additional facilities. I would have thought that this would have been researched way back when it first was proposed so that we didn't have to worry about any additional lawsuits. Lawsuits can be won. I don't think that's the largest concern. What I'm more concerned about is additional dispensaries, and I hope that there's a vote against that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak? All right, with that, I'm going to close public comment. We do have two emails that have been sent on to us that are going to be read by the clerk.
Jaclyn Sullivan said, "Let's keep it down to three cannabis shops in Madison Heights because we are a small city." And the other one was from Janice Nikitin. Would like the following comment to be read. "I think the city should limit the marijuana dispensaries to three. I am not in favor of the city adding two more."
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone who spoke this evening, and thank you, everyone who came out. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have four items. We have number three, International Artist Day proclamation honoring Jennifer Ramirez. We have, from the city manager, the interlocal agreement with Oakland County for informational technology services. Number five, Mary Bush is resigning from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And then number six, the regular city council meeting minutes of October ninth. Can I get a motion to approve?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda?
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, just two really quick items to highlight in here. First, I can't believe that it's been so many months that it's already going to be Jen Ramirez Day. When I made that motion, it feels like it was like a year ago, but I'm excited to see that there's great programming at the library, both honoring Jen Ramirez, but also highlighting International Artist Day, allowing for some coloring, that event that people can participate in. And I also want to highlight that there's the Arts Board Gala, which we're labeling effectively as kind of arts prom for adults. It's going to be a great time. You get to dress up, you get to come out, there's a limited open bar, there's going to be dancing, all a great time, and it's honoring Jen Ramirez and her remarkable works of art that she's brought into our city. So please, please consider picking up tickets for that. It's, if you go to the Arts Board Facebook page, it's on there. It's November seventeenth, six o'clock till end about midnight, but you want to make sure you get your tickets now before the prices go up, and I'd encourage everyone, including my colleagues, pick up a, pick up a table even, fill it with ten of your friends. It'll be a really, really great time in honoring an incredible artist in our community. I also want to give a quick shout-out. I see Mary Bush's resignation from the Parks and Rec Board on here, and I know we send her the individual, you know, thank you for your service note there, but I also just wanted on the record, Mary Bush has done an outstanding job on that board, among many others, throughout my entire decade on council, and I'm just thankful that she was able to invest the time that she did into our Parks and Rec Board.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just regarding Mary Bush, I just, I hate to see her leave the Parks and Rec Advisory Board because she has so much ambition and so many great ideas to beautify our parks. And if she will, it will always be an honor just to get her advice on some of the things and possibly implement some of her ideas into the parks because that was one board that I know she passionately enjoyed being on. So it's very saddening to see that she has to resign for her own reasons.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All against, say no. Motion carries, approved. And then we have, from the Director of Public Services, the DPS pavement repair.
Over the last several budget cycles, DPS has phase-funded the replacement of the failing pavement around the building and yard at the DPS Center. The phase approach allows us to reduce the impact on the budget as well as DPS operations. Staff reached out to our engineering firm to measure and estimate the cost of the phase, the phase process based on Delicio's unit bid price for concrete. Delicio was awarded the most recent bid for both the R-three reconstruction and the major and local sectional paving projects. The scope of work is within the budgetary amount, and Delicio will be able to replace the concrete this fall or in early spring if the weather changes. This phase of pavement repair corrects significant drainage issues as well as provides a staging pad for the large plows and other equipment, which currently sink into the gravel. A permanent concrete brine containment unit is also being constructed as part of this project, replacing the temporary plastic and wood structure we currently have in place. These repairs will bring the DPS into regulatory compliance as it relates to brine storage and runoff prevention. Staff recommends that council award the contract to the DPS pavement repairs to Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township in a project amount of three hundred and ten thousand dollars, sixty-four cents. Funding is budgeted and available, and Chris Woodward has joined us tonight if anyone has any questions for staff.
All right, well, let's start with a motion from council, please.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract for the DPS pavement repairs to Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township, Michigan, in a project amount of three hundred and ten thousand, sixty-four cents.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just clarification from staff for the public sense sake, this is three hundred grand or so. Is this a single-source bid with Delicio, or did we shop concrete pricing prior to?
So we did when we sent out the concrete price. So when we do the bids for R-three construction and major and local, it includes a unit price for concrete, and so we received several bids for that, and Delicio was the most economical at the time. So this will piggyback on to those prices that they gave us for all of our road construction.
Okay, and Your Honor, if I may, also on a follow-up, at this quantity with this additional project versus our- additional project versus our standard scope, are they offering, or is it possible to get any discounts for this particular project as it is, uh, pretty significant in scope and in addition to our typical concrete purchasing?
So we didn't ask that part. We just use the current contract that we have in place because we're already relatively lower than everybody else that had bid at the time. So they're not giving us an extra discount, is what I'm trying to say for this project. So yeah, the unit prices are included. I was trying to find that in the agenda item, and these are the same prices that they quote us for our road work. So it's the exact same unit price, like for concrete pavement as it was for the R3 reconstruction projects that we're going to be doing and that we did do.
Okay, is there any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All against, say no. Motion carries. Uh, we have postponed the ordinances, so we're done. I invite closing comments, starting with Councilwoman Erin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to first offer my condolences to the McGilvery family. Diane, I've only met her a couple of times, but she was a very sweet-spirited woman, and it's very difficult losing your mom. Um, I'm happy to still have mine, so, you know, when you say, "I can relate," I can't, and I really don't want to, but I want to just give a great hug to her children, her husband. Um, thank you, Mr. Sherman, for that wonderful proclamation that every time I hear what's going on, it brings tears to my eyes. I stand with Israel. I, I know that it's something that we must get over. You know, we have to get through with this, and the only way we can get through it is to stand strong and pray that things will soon end. Um, another thing, as I was out canvassing the other day, I, um, ironically had someone close the door on me because he said that my paper was not a UAW paper. Um, however, though I've never been a part of a union because I worked in healthcare the majority of my adult life, and healthcare, we do not have unions. I am the granddaughter of a UAW worker. My grandfathers, both parental and maternal, um, were both factory workers, working for Chrysler and, um, General Motors. You know, my uncles, my stepdad, my cousins, all have worked for UAW. Um, I remember as a kid when it was a strike and my stepdad kept sitting at home, and I've never ever in my life saw a grown man cry. And I understood that he was crying because the strike had continually went on for so many days. And my stepdad wasn't crying because he wasn't at work. He was crying because he was afraid of how he was going to continue to take care of us in the event that he did not go back to work. So not only do I stand with UAW, I stand with those from Blue Cross Blue Shield, as well as the casinos. I believe that we have to stand up for our rights and get what we need. You know, people are working hard every day, and we can't break our backs working for someone else and not be appreciated. So although it may be a long 35 days, and I know so many UAW workers that are willing to go out another 35 days, whatever they need to do, but as they are on strike, we must remember that those are the families that may need our support. You know, they may need a hand in helping with a meal, or may need a hand in paying a bill. So just to say that we're standing with them, but not actually helping, if you can and you're able, I ask you all to please help someone that you know that are out there standing up for their rights in striking. Um, I want to say congratulations to the Madison Heights Community Coalition. They received a $10,000 grant from Meyer. I don't have all the details because my son did not call me back to give me all of those details. However, I do know that he is a part of the decision-making on where that $10,000 will go and how it is to be spent, and I do know that they are looking to use it in some form to help with the, um, Youth Advisory Council, the white, the Youth Wellness Council, I'm sorry, the Youth Wellness Council. And that's the youth council that is helping with mental health for the children in the city. Um, when Ms. Heisler came to the Women's Club meeting the other day, she had said that she had surveyed a lot of students over at Lamphier and also at Page Middle School, which is where the Youth Wellness Council goes. And one of the question was, if you were having a mental health crisis, who would you go to? And 58% of the children said they'll go to their friends. Where we have trained staff and counselors, here, they, those children did not feel comfortable going to the trained staff, but their friends. So we're going to do better. I know the, the coalition is going to do better in finding support to that will help the kids out. Um, a couple of days ago, council received an email regarding a hit-and-run where a young man, young boy, 16 years old, was riding his bike to school. I received it, um, seeing the Facebook post from his mother, and I like to read it, and it says, "My son is the victim in the hit-and-run, and someone put this together for our family. It's a meal train. My son sustained three skull fractures, brain bleed, tearing the right shoulder, contusions on both lungs, but his right lung is worse. Roll rash all over his body. It's been the most heartbreaking experience as a parent. The Madison Heights police officers were absolutely amazing. The woman who stopped to help my son was also amazing. We are so grateful, as Nathan does not have a bit of recovery process ahead." Process ahead. He still can't sit, a bit of a recovery process ahead. He still can sit up on his own yet, he still can't sit up on his own yet, and he's mainly been sleeping from all the heavy meds, but we're optimistic that he will get through this journey. They have a meal train for anyone that wants to help to supply a meal to the family because when it's your child, you're at the hospital 24 hours a day. So I'm not sure if she has other kids at home, other family members, but again, if you can just go onto the Facebook pages under Friends of Madison Heights Facebook page, and it's mealtrain.com, to help Nathan Goodson, um, and just keep that family lifted in prayer. And finally, well, one more thing. This is Red Ribbon Week, which highlights the importance of living a drug-free life. October 23rd to 31st, this week, youth and adults around the nation pledge to increase their knowledge by learning more about the destructive effects of drug abuse, including prescription drugs misuse, and renew their commitment to live a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. Other than remember to vote on November 7th. I am done. Take care.
Thank you. Mayor Protemblis?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. A few things tonight. Um, I'd, I'd also like to echo my condolences on Diane McGilvery. I grew up here, I, I've known Diane and the entire McGilvery family since I was a little kid, and she just absolutely radiated kindness and love. She was incredibly caring. Uh, she was always at Gary's side in anything that he ever was volunteering in and doing, and, you know, that is a, a big loss, not just for the McGilvery family, but also for the city of Madison Heights. And so my thoughts and prayers go out to Gary, Andy, Amy, and the entire extended family. This is a, a tough time, and, uh, yeah, I, hopefully we can do some sort of condolence resolution, uh, coming up. If nothing else, to, to mail it out to them. I know it might be difficult to, to get the family here, uh, but if we could do a condolence resolution, that would be greatly appreciated. My next point, uh, kind of a two-parter on, on roads policy. I'd like to see two things on the next council agenda. The first is the resolution I've asked for about the I-75 expansion and the additional extended construction costs that it's going to cost us on our road repairs because of all the detours coming through our city. Uh, I would like that to be sent to our, our state rep and our state senator. I'd like there to be awareness at the additional costs and inconvenience that our residents have been put through, and sooner as opposed to later, because as they're developing their budgets, or as there might be potential grant opportunities that they can put us in touch with, uh, that would be helpful because our shot clock has already started. Roads that might have had another three years on our schedule have now had giant multi-axle trucks on detours coming off the freeway on them. And so, uh, eventually, those will come due earlier than we had planned to pay for it, and that money has to come from somewhere. And right now, I don't know where we'd figure it out in the budget without their help and assistance. So love to get that onto the next agenda. Uh, if it takes another member, either publicly or privately, supporting it, uh, please do so, uh, because I'd like that to get on the agenda. I would also like, on that agenda, or at least one close to it, us to establish a traffic-related task force. We now have two major accidents with students.
Going to school.
And that's, not only is that unacceptable, but, uh, I, I want to make sure that we are learning from it. And so, uh, we already have a, a road safety committee internally into the city. Uh, I would love it if we could have a task force that also brings in, uh, folks from our school boards and other local agencies, uh, because we really need to have an open and honest dialogue of what we can do. You know, as was noted in the comments, there were some stop signs added because we identified that that's an area where people were speeding and there was traffic associated. Uh, what can we do around some of these school zones? What can we do, uh, to be able to protect our residents? Uh, is it, is it better lighting? Is it better signage? Is it reduced speed limits? Um, I'm, there are people way smarter about this than I am, who I'd love to be able to weigh in, uh, but I want to make sure that we're having that conversation. Uh, and since tonight, we had an ITAC meeting where we talked for 20 minutes about cybersecurity initiatives and things to protect our city, uh, it really makes me think how important it is to have experts in their field who live and work in the city of Madison Heights, providing their insight to us to make better decisions. And I'd love to do something similar as it relates to traffic. There's just, the, the potential cost is too high, uh, if we do nothing, and so I'd like for us to have that conversation. Uh, finally, and I feel like everything's been somber so far, so I do want to end, uh, on a really excited note. Uh, I am so incredibly thankful and excited about our new Rock the Heights Bandstand coming to Civic Center Park through a grant. Y'all, this is incredible, a $250,000 grant from the Consumers Energy Foundation. So I want to thank our, our grant application team, but specifically, uh, City Manager Marsh. When this was an initial concept, honestly, I was, uh, speaking with members of the, the Arts Board Subcommittee on this, and we thought it would take three to five years, and it was a long-term goal, and it's already here. That bandstand will be in place, knock on wood, but by the festival in the park. Like, how incredible is that, uh, to be able to, to see something so big coming to our city, uh, without a capital investment? Now, our, our Arts Board just had our sixth anniversary, so, uh, the fact that we're already able to, you know, have this coming to the city because we have so many concerts, because we have brought in these types of arts initiatives, and because we have a city staff that sees the value of arts in the city, that sees the value of music and performance art, and what that means to our residents, particularly after a pandemic where it was stripped away from us. It's just incredible, and it's the type of thing that makes me proud to be a Madison Heights resident. It makes me proud to be on city council, and it makes me proud to go to work here in my second job on council, and to work with incredible people who value the same things that I do, uh, like City Manager Marsh. And so, incredibly thankful. If you want to help bring more arts to the city, please buy that gala ticket. Because if we don't have that type of support, uh, it's, we're not going to be able to keep bringing this stuff. And then make sure to come out to all the concerts that we're going to have, the plays, so many things we're going to be able to do in the park now that we've got this bandstand.
Thank you. Counselor Wright?
I want to start off by offering my condolences to the McGilvery family as well. Um, it's never easy to lose a loved one. Um, I lost my uncle last, two weeks ago, and it was a bit anticipated, but it still hurts. Still, um, as much as you think you're ready, you're never ready. So my condolences to them on their losses they grieve. I want to, um, also, um, thank Jeff for, uh, presenting that, uh, resolution. Um, you know, I don't, I'll, I'll just say it, the, the HRC could not have done a better job. We could not have provided the perspective, the insight, and the clarity that you provided there. And, um, if possible, I'd love for that to be posted on the city website and on the HRC's, uh, page as well, uh, because it's important. And I think it's important because we talk about equity and inclusion and being equitable, and I think that, you know, and I heard how that was put together, that was considered, and it wasn't, uh, something that didn't provide perspective. So thank you. You know, I too stand with Israel, and I, I too understand that it's not a, a simple issue as we like to think, but, um, thank you for sharing that. Um, I serve as a council rep for the, um, Madison Heights Community Coalition, so I want to send congratulations to them as well. That was an unexpected win, so it's going to be exciting to see how that impacts the community. Uh, it's going to be fun to see that moving forward. Um, it's, it's going to be good to see. So, um, I too have followed up on the, uh, the kid who had the distracted driving. Um, I'm sorry, the, the kid who was hit, I was tagged in a couple of posts, and people said, "What can we do?" Um, you know, some of the things we have done is we passed the Distracted Driving Ordinance, but, you know, one thing I want to remind all of us, all of the parents watching, all of the people watching, all the people here, it really comes down to us paying attention to what we're doing. I cannot tell you how many times I see people driving distracted. How many times I see people who are on their phone, people who are just not paying attention because they have their headphones in. You know, we can pass all the laws in the world to like, try and fix this, but like, this has got to be like, not a head issue, but a heart issue, where we all just say, "That could be my brother, my cousin, my sister, my mom, who's crossing that street." Because that's what's happening, is that people are not paying attention, and this is causing the accident. So we passed the distracted driving, and, you know, I hope that, you know, our officers are going to be on, on alert, but at the end of the day, it's got to come down to us like, being more aware of our surroundings and just seeing each other and not seeing our phones. So please, 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 take ownership of it. Let's not make it somebody else's responsibility or duty. Let's take care of it ourselves. I want to congratulate Jennifer Ramirez, Ramirez as well. She is awesome. I remember, uh, her first mural I saw her do, and then I also remember her being kind to me and allowing my daughters to help her paint one time, and that meant the world to them. It meant the world to me, too, because that was actually my first time meeting her, and at the time, she was my neighbor, so, um, and, you know, finally, I just would like to say, um, you know, to take it back to our friends who are standing up, our friends who are striking. I stand with the members of the UAW. I stand with the members of Blue Cross. But more importantly, let's take some action, and if you want to help, I know that Region One is collecting goods at, um, their facility in Warren. If you want to drop off canned goods, if you want to support them, you can take pizza to the picket lines. Um, my dad is UAW 5094, and my mom CWA, so I know all too well the impacts of what they're trying to do. They're not eating, um, and living like they were in the past because it's been 35 days. That hits home now. It's real now. Before, it was like, woo, let's go. Now it's like, woo, let's go. So keep them in your mind, keep them in your prayers, but also take them a pizza and a snack. And finally, you know, there's a lot of things to get set up here, a lot of things to get done, all in effort to make the city better. Let's just all remember to be kind.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Burns, anything from the attorney's office?
Just briefly, Your Honor, um, Jeff brought this up again, but, uh, earlier, but I've known the McGilvery family for about 18 years. Both Larry and Jeff have known them for a lot longer than that, and, uh, there's a lot of sadness in our office this week with the news of their loss. And again, we just want to give heartfelt condolences to the McGilvery family. Um, and, uh, if they need anything, please contact us. Um, additionally, we had someone, uh, during public comment, talking about a dispute he's having with his business neighbor, resident of the business. Want to let you know that city staff in our office have been dealing with him for a few hours, um, this week. We're in process of trying to get that matter resolved, so, uh, we take those situations very seriously, and we're working our best to get that matter taken care of for, so that hopefully both parties are satisfied with the outcome. taken care of, so that hopefully both parties are satisfied with the outcome. And finally, there was a lot of talk about whether or not to allow more marijuana licenses in the city. I did want to note that we are taking some action for the non-licensed businesses that are in the city. When the first, the state first allowed marijuana in, they had something called Caregiver Grows that they allowed. And we found from law enforcement perspective, that's been causing a lot of the issues we're seeing in the city regarding illegal handling of the drugs, the smell and odor issues. And we've been taking a hard line on inspections of those facilities, and if they don't comply with their MMA regulations. We've been taking legal action to get them out of town. In the last few months, I've had six of those businesses moved out of town. I have another four cases pending right now. If you're doing things legal, you have no problem. But if you're doing illegal activities, illegal drug activities in the city, you know, we are taking very seriously. So, I don't want people to think that there's not a concern about marijuana community there is. And when people are acting illegally, we are taking action. And when they are acting legally, we're, you know, taking, making sure their rights are being taken care of as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marsh?
I'd like to echo the comments to the McGilvery family. Diane, as well as Gary and their children, really are examples of what it means to be excellent public servant to our community, whether that through holding public office or just volunteering. They have truly made a difference in Madison Heights, and I am very sad for the family. I did, my heart did smile a little bit today, though, because for those of you who knew Diane, you know that she is probably one of the best bakers that I have ever met. And tonight, I was honored to get a copy of that chocolate chip cookie recipe, which is fabulous. So, every time I make that, I will definitely be thinking fondly of Diane. In addition, so to compound on Jennifer Ramirez Day, I want to let everyone know we're having color with Jennifer at the library. That's at 10:30 at the library on Wednesday, the 25th. And then, for those of you who may be working or not into coloring these days, at 5:30 from 7:30 at night, we will be having a reception with some light refreshments, so I encourage you to come out. Jennifer will be present and have some examples of her art there. So, it should be a good time and a great way to honor one of our residents with a fantastic talent.
Thank you. Anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Yes, I too would like to echo the comments about Diane McGilvery, and send my condolences to the family. This Saturday begins early voting for the residents of the city of Madison Heights. So, on Saturday, October 28th, and continuing through Sunday, October 5th, at the Royal Oak Senior Community Center located at 3,500 Marius Avenue, you can, as a registered voter of Madison Heights, cast your ballot early. The hours will be from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. daily, except for on Thursdays, which is November 2nd this year, when the hours will be 12 p.m. to 8 p.m. If you'd rather vote absentee, you can contact the clerk's office and get your absentee ballot application. Or if you'd rather cast your ballot on Election Day, all voting locations will be open on Tuesday, November 7th, from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact our office. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Robach?
Yeah. I have this long list, and I don't, it's, it's been, we have had a lot of comments tonight, so I don't necessarily want to go deep into all of these. And so, let me start by saying, I echo the condolences for the McGilvery family, for Diane. One of my very first times knocking on doors in Madison Heights, one of the very first doors that actually opened the door for me, because, you know, you knock lots of doors, 90% don't open the door for you. But one of the very first ones that actually opened the door for me was Diane McGilvery. And at that point, I didn't know who she was. So, she opened the door, and I introduced myself, and she smiled, and she listened, and she was so kind. And when you first start doing that kind of thing, it's so hard. It's, you're putting yourself out there, it's scary. And she was so kind, and I have remembered that every, every time I see her, every time I think of her, I think about how kind she was. And I know that is just, it's who she was. So, I know she will be missed. There are, you know, the last few weeks, we've had a lot of things going on. The Trail of Treats, Arts Board does such a good job. Lori Gerald's really, you know, takes it on and makes that happen, so I especially want to commend her. The Friends of the Library book sale was last week, I can't remember how long ago it was now, but I especially want to say thank you to Deborah Shepherd, Kristi Menzer, and the volunteers for the Madison Heights Women's Club. They came out and helped get that set up, and really made that a great event, and brought in quite a bit of funds for the Friends of the Library. So, you know, and the Bandshell, so exciting. The folks that have been working on that have been working on it a lot, both in the city and the folks that, on the Arts Board who are volunteering their time. It's just really great to see people doing good things and working hard at them, and having them come to fruition, and benefiting the city. And I just, you know, we can't say thank you enough to those dedicated volunteers who make things happen. Before I go to this last thing, or, one more thing, I just want to say about the marijuana licenses. You know, I am, I've made it clear that I am not in favor of adding additional licenses. I was all in favor of the first two. The third one, fine, we got the three. But I do not want to see us do anymore, and I think that our residents don't want to see us do anymore. There are so many issues coming up. There are, there are, there's litigation, and there's all this stuff regardless. I think that, I just want to say proudly now, that I am not in favor of doing anymore. I don't think that I have the majority on council's support, and so, that is, is what it is. We are a body that gets to vote as a group. But I really, I appreciate those people who've come out to tell us how they feel about that situation. I think it's, I'm not going to go anymore. The last thing I want to say is that I've spent some time crying this last week, because there's so much suffering in the world, what's happening in Israel, you know, the children. It doesn't matter what side of a border you're on, what side of fence you're on, children. I mean, I am a mother, and seeing children, seeing anyone suffer, but especially children, is so incredibly heartbreaking. And I just can't, I can't, it's hard to hold that suffering and, and to feel like anything other than paralyzed about it. This weekend, someone who I consider a friend, a colleague, somebody I've worked side by side with, was brutally murdered. And she was, if anything, a light. She was one of those people who, you know, when you talk to her, she never broke eye contact. She nodded vigorously. She made sure that you knew that she was listening to you, and wanted to understand you, and wanted to build a bridge between you and her, no matter where you are, even if you were standing on the same side. She wanted that bridge to be stronger. She wanted to do good things. And she worked in so many different ways. She was a prominent member of the Jewish community, but she, and she worked hard, you know, building bridges with the Muslim community and the Black community and all of the, she was just always pulling people together. And that is, you know, if anybody could say anything about anybody, I think that is one of the highest praises we can give someone, is that they were pulling people together. She wanted, she worked hard to try and remove suffering, and champion people, and remove obstacles to people being able to access life and liberty in the pursuit of happiness. She was a wonderful, wonderful person. Her name was Sam Wall, and I know, I know a lot of people have heard about her lately. But somebody said, quoted this about her, you know, it's a quote from somebody else, but they said this about her, and I really think it captures her, what she would want, you know, after being, her life, 40 years old, to be taken away so shockingly, brutally, and so quickly. I think she would have wanted us to continue the work that she was doing, to bring people together. The quote that I read today that somebody put out about her, it said, "Do not be daunted by the enormity of the world's grief. Do justly now, love mercy now, and walk humbly now. You are not obligated to complete the work, but neither are you free to abandon it." So.
Counselor Fleming?
Yeah, I too give my condolences to the McGilvery family. I've known, I haven't really got to know Diane McGilvery at all. I met her a couple of times at several events, but I do know their son, Andy McGilvery, I worked with him at, you know, a lot on the parade. And their family is going through a lot right now. If you do not know, Gary McGilvery's, his health is, he has health issues, and, and so we need prayers for the entire family, really. They're going through a tremendous time where they really need some strength, and prayers headed their way. Also, I too am a union worker. I am a worker at the Communications Workers of America, which is the telephone company, and I've been working there, and a union member for about 20, 25 years next year. And I can tell you, I've been through a strike before, and strike pay does not pay bills. It's really something that, if you haven't been saving for it, you know, I think they say you should be saving like, two or three months for Ouija's, that you can go through a strike. And I don't even think that the UAW is going to settle anytime soon. They've just actually expanded the strike. And it's really important that the union members who are fighting for their rights for workers, that actually has an effect on all workers, union workers and non-union workers. And so, as everybody else here has commented, I too also, if you, if you can help out your neighbor who's a union member, any, any way at all, and help them if they are in need of, you know, food or anything, like diapers or anything else with their family, toothpaste, whatever, they will be more than happy about that. Also, the resolution for, for Israel. I really appreciate the resolution being made and written by our attorney, Joe Sherman there. I too, I'm Jewish also, and we had a vigil that a non-Jewish person put on a couple, about a week or so ago, and I was able to attend. And, you know, you see the pictures of, of the people that have passed away, and we have 30 Americans and, you know, 1,400 Israelis, all from different religions, and probably some are even Palestinians also, who, who were murdered in Israel. And it's, it's something that, it's a lot of, it's, it's bad. So, you know, I really, I really hope and pray that we can come to a time of peace in the region. I think that's what everybody wants to have, is peace. And I hope that also, everybody can have prayers for, for Israel as a whole, no matter what side that you're on. And so, I really believe that the resolution was really, really great in that matter. So, also want to say the Bandshell, if you don't know what a Bandshell is, State Fair, if you've ever been there, on Eight Mile, the Bandshell, they have one that's actually being moved across the street to Billy Palmer Park, on Seven, right across on Seven Mile there, take a crane and move it across. But I really look forward to all the programming we're going to be having at the Bandshell. I hope that we can have lots, maybe some concerts in the summer, a summer series of concerts and other things that are going on. But, you know, that's the kind of things I look forward to. That's, oh, and one last thing, I just want to say that I really, I really appreciate that everybody here at this meeting, we did well, and it's nice to be nice. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Moltis?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I want to, I want to first say shout out for our police and fire, the fantastic job that they do, day in and day out. I used to do that EMS a long time ago, and, and worked nights, and it's, it's rough, and it's, but, but they do a fantastic job, and we're lucky to have them. Secondly, Jeffrey, you outdid yourself tonight. There was so much passion in that, and accuracy, and, so we really appreciate everything you put into that. That's all, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. So, I just want to say, you know, I send my condolences to the McGilvery family. A few years ago, the county used to have a trick-or-treat event, similar to the Pumpkin Walk or the Trail of Treats, but they had it over at the Nature Center. And so, the women's club had a table, and my daughter was, was helping Diane with it. And she, you know, it was just, it was really nice, because just the kind of person that she, she was. And she was talking about, you know, she was, she was waiting to have grandchildren of her own. And she said, "I want, I want someone to bake cookies with." And so, at the visitation this evening, the service was at 7:00, so council was here. We had a, we had a meeting, but the visitation was earlier in the afternoon. And so, I went over, and when we walked in, it was almost like a party favor. It was a copy of, I think you alluded to this, it was a copy of her recipe with a couple of little cookies that her daughter Amy made. And I just looked at it, and I was like, "That is so her." Like, that was, that was just who she was. So, I just, I thought that was great, and my heart goes out to, to the whole family. I want to say, Vida, thank you for coming with me last week. You know, there's only so much that the city as a whole, that council members together and individually can do. And I feel that, you know, there are times people will reach out to us, and a lot of times, I say, "I'm sorry, there's nothing I can do. I'm sorry, that, that sucks, but there's nothing I can do." And Vida had reached out to me about this woman, and I said, "Well, you know, have you looked at this? Have you looked at that?" And then I invited her to, to this breakfast, and it was talking about homelessness and poverty. And she came, and I was, you know what, if only, if we only had one ticket, it would have been Vida who should have been there, because of, you know, she was just, she was getting all this information, and based on that, we, you know, she was able to do something. So, I put her in touch with them, but she did the work, and she was able to collect. So, that's really what, that's what community is. Community is also saying, "Hey, we have a great artist in the city, and there's this thing called Artist Day. You know, why don't we change it to name it in Madison Heights after our artists?" So, I encourage everyone to come out Wednesday, either in the morning or in the evening, to celebrate Jennifer Ramirez and Jennifer Ramirez Day. I'd also like to thank Mary Bush for the work that she did on the Parks and Rec. That is a mayor's appointment, and quite often, people will apply for different boards. But when we had a vacancy on that, she had been reaching out to me, suggesting this and suggesting that. And I finally said to her, I said, "Mary, Parks and Rec is a mayor's appointment. Why don't you just apply and be on the board?" And she did. And I know that if she didn't have personal reasons, she would still be, she would still be on that. With respect to the hit and run, please watch where you're going. Distracted driving, it doesn't matter how many laws we put up, it doesn't matter if we put stop signs everywhere, it doesn't matter if we put a police officer on every corner. You need to pay attention to what you're doing. You need to pay attention, because there's kids that are walking, people that are biking, they're just, it's not just the big cars that you see. Pay attention. Congratulations to the Arts Board, to Councilman Bliss and Mrs. Marsh for the Bandshell. That was great. If you haven't caught on a theme here, a lot of our funding comes from grants, and city manager is responsible for 99% of that. So, you know, thank you for that. That, that's awesome that we have that. And then, finally, thank you, Mr. Sherman, for that resolution. So, when all this happened a couple of weeks ago, there was a solidarity meeting, there was a solidarity vigil. Thank you, Councilman Soltis, for chairing that, our council meeting. Mr. Bliss had said he wouldn't be here, and I said, "I don't know that we've ever, if we have, it's been not since I've been on council, had a situation where both the mayor and the pro town are absent, and Councilman Soltis stepped up and, and chaired that meeting." But I was at this vigil, and what was more important to me, or the most important to me, was the number of non-Jewish people who were there, just being there to support this. But I also did reach out to Mr. Sherman, and I said, "I want to do some kind of resolution." And we had a little bit of, of back and forth on that, on what it was going to be. And I said, "I want to be very clear that, that Hamas is a terrorist organization, and that..." I said, I want to be very clear that, that Hamas is a terrorist organization, and that, that, you know, that we feel for everybody over there, and that this is, you know, but this is Hamas, specifically Hamas. And so wonderful job on that, that was great. Thank you so much for doing that. You know, it was just, that was it, and when Daniel said he couldn't have done a better job, I, I agree, because I did write a few things down, but, you know, nothing like, like what you did. So thank you so much for that. You know, and Counselor Warbuck, thank you for sharing that quote from the Talmud. That's very important. It is horrible to see children hurt. It is horrible to see children murdered. It is horrible to know that entire families were just wiped out. And, you know, there's only 15 million Jews in the world. There aren't that many of us. That's what, Michigan and a half? Like, there really aren't that many of us out there. So we really need people of all faiths and all religions to stand with us, just the way that we stand against racism. And Vida, again, this is like the Vida Show. Vida, thank you for coming out to this vigil. And with respect to this resolution, we're going to send it on to the different representatives, but I ask, you know, I'm asking that they take this on as well, and I also reach out, I'm going to be reaching out to the elected officials, not just who represent Madison Heights, but to surrounding communities, because they need to take a stand, too. You know, if, if it's up to the 15 million of us to do this on our own, not only have we lost and will be wiped out, but terror has won. It's just like, the, just like what the Nazis people are saying, oh, if I was there 80 years ago, I would have done something. This is your time to do something. And with that, our next meeting will be November 13th. The time is now nine o'clock, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.